Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:31 and I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, the usual reminders, let me make sure that everyone is reminded if you're going to address the board to make sure the microphones are turned on and you speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear and because our minutes are prepared from the recording. Please also make sure that you identify yourself for the record if you're addressing the board either as an applicant or as an interested citizen. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for August 1st, 2023 at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, although I have a note that that may, if there aren't any agenda items, that meeting may be postponed or canceled. We'll see how that goes for tonight. Let's see, Robert, what's the status of alternates and regular members? Are we all voting tonight?
Yeah, I would seat Halim for Jamie.
Halim for Jamie, you guys are already full members, excellent. So that would give us six votes for that. Is that all the people? All right. Let's see, that is all of the usual housekeeping items. That brings us to item two on our agenda, which is our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, sorry, we forgot one thing. There's actually the election of officers to replace, to elect a new vice chair that was omitted from that.
Ah, it's not on this agenda, it's not on that agenda. It's still on this one. I got it. Okay, let's do that before we get to the consent agenda. So, election of officers for a vice chair. Paul's term is up and he asked not to be reappointed to the board and so that leaves us without a vice chair. It is too bad, we should certainly thank Paul for his service and encourage the town council to do the same thing too. I know that they occasionally will do certificates or whatever for years of service. With that in mind though, we are in need of a new vice chair and I'll open up the floor for anybody that wishes to make a nomination or suggestion. Seeing none. What's that? What? I'm looking both ways, you know, I think that you'd be great. I think, well Brian, you're leaving the board to go to the ZPA, hopefully if all those appointments go through. Barbara?
I'd like to nominate Lynn Christensen for vice chair.
Nominate Lynn Christensen for vice chair, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I will not object.
Doesn't object to the appointment?
I will not object.
I think that's an excellent choice frankly. With that in mind, if there's any other nominations that anyone would be making? No? Then all in favor of electing Lynn as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstention, so that is 5-0-1 for Lynn, congratulations.
I think.
You want the gavel, you want to hit people with it, it's over here?
I don't need a gavel. I'm used to being moderator.
Not allowed to hit people with them anyway, so I don't know what you need the gavel for. Okay, let's turn, return back to our consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda, mostly a bunch of extension requests plus regional impact determinations for probably the items on our agenda tonight. What is the will of the board? Lynn?
I move we approve the consent agenda as printed in the memo dated July 6th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is 6-0-0 for the consent agenda. All right, item three on our agenda is start in realty LLC as the applicant and owner, continued review for consideration of final approval for a site plan for the addition of a gas station, convenience store, and drive-through coffee shop at the site of an existing car wash. The parcel is located at 376 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts Tax Map 43, Lot 2, Case Planning Board 2022-40. The item is continued from the November 15th and December 20th, 2022 meetings and the January 17th, February 21st, March 21st, April 18th, and June 6th planning board meetings. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, just quickly, applicants have submitted revised plans since the board last met with them. Staff is confident while there are still a number of comments in the conditions, proposed conditions of approval, that can be worked out in the background should the board decide to proceed. There are three items though that are not necessarily regulatory, but I think the board needs to weigh in on, which I discussed in my memo. The first being the landscaping plan while significantly improved over where we started from. I noted that on the southern property line, there's really not much landscaping at all proposed there, so it's really up to the board to discuss with the applicant if it makes sense to put anything in there. The other two comments relate to fire department comments, one being that the turning plan provided shows that access through the site would be rather difficult and would show some encroachments over the curbing throughout the site. So it's up to the board to determine if that's okay or if the site feels too crowded. And the last one being the continuation of a comment the fire department raised a while ago in that there still is no bypass lane for the drive-through around the coffee shop.
Robert, could you offer any insight or comment on the fact that it's taken nine meetings to get to where we are today?
The, so we started this a while ago, yes. The applicant submitted plans, staff had a number of comments, they requested time to address those along the way, we have asked for continuances. So it's been a mixture of plans being submitted and applicant working to address those and other delays that the applicant could speak to that I'm just not fully aware of.
I'm absolutely not laying blame on the applicant or you or the staff or anybody else, I'm just trying, curious about the process and I'm, this particular project doesn't have a lot of a butter interest or concern, but generally speaking, nine meetings can create a lot of butter fatigue where the poor folks, you know, may end up there in the beginning and losing interest towards the end. And so that's the reason for the question is just kind of understanding it and certainly not anything that I would inject into the debate over the consideration of this project. I was just interested in perhaps seeing things move along faster.
Understood, thanks.
And again, not a criticism of the staff. Tell us where at, introduce yourself first.
My name is David Frottingham of Will Cox and Barton, I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Is your microphone turned on?
Is that better?
Yeah.
There we go, my name is David Frottingham.
I can hear you fine, but the folks at home can't.
I'm the civil engineer on the project. So since the last meeting where we presented revisions including changing the site circulation primarily to one-way around the site, moving the dumpsters around to provide additional space behind the building. We did provide an additional drawing, more detailed drawing of the canopy, which is shown here. The canopy is proposed as a pitched roof with asphalt shingles and clavoured siding on it. It is unknown at this point if there will be a sign on the canopy or the type of fuel, Mobil, Exxon, Irving, whatever. We'll come back at a different time with our application to deal with signage on the So this kind of brings the canopy into more of a country store style type, you know, a little more fitting with the neighborhood because it was clear the board did not want to see a traditional gas station canopy, which is just a 36-inch wide band with a flat roof. So it still has fire suppression in it, it's all up in the steel structure, that's basically the, the rest of it's just a facade, still the same steel structure, it's just built over. One of our previous submissions did show an example of another one in the area that we're emulating for this design.
Thank you for that, I think it is more attractive than those traditional 36-inch wide bands. I have a question about the signage and I know that you don't have any proposed now and maybe you won't ever. We have had interest in the past to discuss at the planning board level signage on canopies where normally we don't fiddle with signage at all. It's not necessarily part of our review. And I don't know from Robert's standpoint, how would we be able to assure that if there is signage on the canopy that it sort of comports with something the planning board would approve or be interested in approving?
All I can say now is when we get canopy signage that comes in, it's done through a standard sign permit application that's reviewed against the sign ordinance criteria, which we basically kind of have to look at it like a wall sign. So given the, how the ordinance works, it's really just based on the size of it to make sure that it fits.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure, and that's what I thought the answer was, but it generally means that if we approve this with or without a sign, we have no influence on what that may end up being?
What the future will hold, yep.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So we did do, just to address the fire departments, some of the fire department's concerns. I did run multiple sized vehicles through the site, including the largest and longest buses that I could find, delivery vehicles for fuel to the site, large, you know, pickup trucks. Most everything moves through the site fairly cleanly. It is true that for a bus or a fire vehicle that's got a lot of overhang on the front and the back, that those overhangs sweep out over the curves, over the curbs, but the actual wheel paths around the site stay within, within the curbed area. And the, the software I use allows me to tweak it a little bit here, here and there, but in general, it's my opinion that it does move through the site, it will fit through the site. It will take a little bit of thought on the driver's part to get through, but it does comply with the turning radiuses and vehicle access to a site.
Lynn, you had some questions on that?
How about a tanker?
Yeah, a tanker, tanker gets in, no problem, it actually goes through the site backwards. It'll have to come in the outside, loop up and around and come out.
When you say in the outside, what do you mean?
So, so the driveway is set up as a one-way in, one-way out.
You come in, you come out.
You come, you come in on the north side.
Yep.
Go around, whatever you're going around, and you go out the south side.
Yep.
The tanker, because of how, because of where on a tanker the drops are.
Yep.
Like you only drop fuel out of one side of a tanker. It comes in, it'll come in at night.
The exit?
It'll come in the exit, go around to the back, park, drop fuel, and then go out the entrance.
So if there's somebody in line?
It will, tank, fuel deliveries are only going to have to occur at night because it needs the full sight to maneuver.
So this is limited to only deliveries at night?
Correct. Yep, and, and that's been the plan from, from the get-go.
Well, it had to be.
But?
Okay.
And in regards to the bypass lane for the drive-through, given the existing car wash in its location and the layout of the lot, and we've provided as much space around there as we can. There is, there is space to get out of line and get past, it is narrow, but there is no dedicated bypass lane for the site. It, it just doesn't fit within, within the area, but we have provided as much space as we physically can to allow vehicles through there. If you do get to the order window and you decide you don't want to, you will be able to get around the order window and then as soon as the pickup person leaves, you can follow them out.
Do you have one of these traffic plans for the tanker?
It is... This is, this is the tanker. It can fit in both directions.
What page?
This is, there's a circulation plan, 25 of 26 of the set. So it, there's two, the southbound turning and a northbound turning plan. They're both the tanker exiting, entering the site.
Right, but the tanker isn't going in the wrong way.
Right, but it...
Its turning radius is different when it's going in the south entrance than it is when it's going in the north entrance.
But the, but the, the entrances are a mirror image of each other, it works both directions.
No.
I mean, I can provide another one if you'd like to see it in the opposite direction.
If...
I did run it in the opposite direction.
If you're coming in from the north side, you come in and it's a straight run to the back.
Correct.
If you're coming in from the south side.
Yep.
Are you suggesting that the tanker is going to go straight in?
It will, it will swing, it will swing a little bit left to miss the, the landscaping island at the front of the...
So you're saying it's going to go straight up the middle rather than around the side?
It'll come, it'll come in through here, up this side.
All right, got it.
Got around and go back out.
Okay. And you've got enough room on the west side?
Yep.
To turn?
I can show it again, I mean, I can provide another one, but I have run it in both directions to make sure that I can, that it fits.
So, yeah, I would like to see it, I'm sure it will work because you're telling me it will, but will the tanker be coming from the south and turning into the south entrance where it's got a nice wide turn or from the southbound lane where turning right into the site could be a fairly tight turn?
It will be coming, I don't know where, I don't know where it's coming from because I don't know where the...
Right, we would, we wouldn't know at this point, but how will the driver of the truck know that he's supposed to go against the signage on the site?
Because the drivers of the trucks are provided specific information about the sites that they're accessing, whether they have to come at night.
Maybe that's somebody's ambition, but lots of truck drivers don't.
Well, but that's, that's part of fuel delivery, you're not getting a random person from UPS that shows up, you know, that they're hired and shows up at the site. And fuel drivers are trained and they go to specific sites on, on a regular schedule.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to submit a plan with the, showing the opposite radiuses of turnings.
Okay. Go ahead, proceed with your presentation.
So with regards to the comments on the landscaping plan, we're happy to add additional landscaping along that, that southern edge between the edge of pavement and the, and the property line, likely be some shrubs, maybe, maybe a few trees, I'll have the landscape architect work up something.
To be perfectly honest, I don't think you've got room for them.
I'll, I'll have to leave it to them to see what I can, what we can get in there.
Barbara, did you have a comment or question? I'm sorry.
No problem. Where are the, wherever they deliver to, what, I don't know what you call those things in the ground?
The tanks.
Yeah, the tank outlets, where are they?
They're...
On the plan, because I've looked at it and I can't figure that out exactly.
So the, like where they put the fuel into the tank?
Mm-hmm.
They're located right on top of the tank. So the tank's buried in the ground.
Where?
At the end of the island?
They're, yeah, well, they're right here at the end of the island.
Okay.
The two tanks.
Okay, yep. Well, I didn't know what that was, that used to be a convenience store, I don't know.
No, the convenience store...
Yeah, it was something in a prior life.
Was over here and we got rid of it.
So I guess I had the same question, has anyone asked the tanker drivers if they have, if they think they can get in and out of there?
Oh, this is, this is a big site for them. They get in and out of much smaller sites.
Okay.
I think they're all right. I thought you were sending them on the far...
Oh, around the building, no, no, they're just, they're just traveling in the opposite direction. Yeah, they're, they're only staying around that canopy. Yep.
And they can do that.
Yeah, and they can do that. And there's plenty of space deep in the site for them to come up and turn around. So this is a drawing, this is what the profile of what the tanks look like. So the fills are actually, you know, poured into the concrete pad above the tanks. So the, the tanks were filled by gravity from the truck.
So you were showing the lighting plan when you were telling me about the landscape, what was the question about the landscape? The staff's question?
The staff had made a comment that there was no landscaping along this edge over here.
What's, what businesses you're abutting property? I forget.
It's the MVC I care, or my I, or whatever they are now.
Right. When you say you'd be...
Looks like it used to be a bank or something, it's got a, just got a drive.
Credit union.
Yeah.
And then it was a lawn cleaners for a while, I think. You said you're fine putting some landscape in there.
Yeah, I'll have the, I'll have the landscape architect, he's going to have to update it because this plan hasn't been updated since we removed some building, the building pieces, so this, this is the updated, be a final plan.
If the limited space that you have is better suited to put like a white vinyl stockade fence or something?
We'll put some, we'll put some sort of screening in there.
Are these, Robert, are these different uses where screening would be normal part of our regulations or we just, the staff raised it just out of a discussion point?
Yeah, I just raised it as a discussion point because as you look at it present day, it's a wide open void. So really, there's a lot of green space on the my eye site, but this, it's a, it's an unpleasant void as you're driving by today, it would just, something to spruce up the area somehow would, would be nice. And even if it just means that only a fence fits, then so be it, but it just feels like an opportunity for something to go there.
Okay. That sounds good, so for the purposes of aesthetics and making it look nice, you know, I'd love to have whatever proposal is, but if it's not a screen where we would normally say you're obligated to keep this from being next to another thing, I don't want to force you to create an actual screen as if there was a residential property next door.
Yeah, it's, it's commercial properties all around.
Yeah.
But it, it is kind of an ugly spot today, that back corner. So we'll, we can add some additional landscaping in there.
There, there is a significant drop-off between your property.
Back, back at the, by the drive-through, yes.
On, on the, that side, that you've got probably a three to four foot drop.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
And...
And back there, it may only be...
That's going to be a challenge to...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, what else, do you want to offer in your presentation?
Those were the only changes.
Okay.
Our last presentation.
Okay.
And I have read through the conditions and we are happy to work with Public Works and the fire department to work through those, those last few comments.
Well, I think the one comment that they have that I don't think you can work through is...
I can't do anything about, about the bypass.
Robert, I know that it's always been our preference to have bypasses for drive-throughs. Are there any occasions where we've approved them without bypasses in the past?
To the best of my knowledge, for the last 20 years, anytime we have had a, a drive-through window and it's been requested to have a bypass lane, they've provided a bypass lane.
Okay. We'll leave that for the board to discuss when it's time for deliberating to decide what to do. I think that it is, I, I think it's sort of a go or no-go for this project if you require a bypass lane, there's just, there's no, there's no space for it.
Right.
No, there's no way to make it happen. I'm usually sort of...
And it's not so much the addition that causes the issue, it's the corner of the, it's this spot right here, the corner of the car wash.
How wide is that space between the corner of the car wash and your property line or whatever you have?
Well, that's a 12-foot wide drive, so it's...
Nothing.
18 feet.
Okay. All right, let's think about that a little bit more and see if there's any discussion the board wishes to have or...
But minute, but as a bypass at that point, I would, as a design, I would have already merged them together. If there was a bypass lane, it would have come around the windows so you could pass the cars at the window and then they would have merged together.
Would, do you have room for that?
I, as I said, I have provided as much space in that back corner.
Let's go left and see.
You know, so there's this car at this window, this, this car here can get around, there's, there's space here, it's tight, but there's space here to get by. So this car can get out. What happens back here is once you're past this point and you've got cars in line, there's no way to get out from back here.
Okay.
Can you get a fire truck?
We can get a fire truck.
Around that?
Yeah, I ran the biggest bus I could find through this.
Yeah, as long as the cars are out of the way, the truck, the truck can get through. If there's a car stuck in the, in there somewhere, that could monkey up the works.
I, I just wanted to check, I did template the site and in perfect world, we would be able to get a fire truck around there, but the world isn't perfect and if you put multiple cars in there, if you put snow in there, it's going to be a very tight site.
Snow on the paved area, you mean, or?
Yes.
I mean, we've got space to move snow out of there if, if that's what needs to happen.
Where are you planning on putting snow?
For now, it's, it's on the edges, primarily back here and then along this, these edges over here.
Okay.
And you've got, and you've got space here on top of the...
I don't want to see it there.
Well, that's...
I'll just be honest.
Cloud's going to pitch it one way or the other.
And I don't want to see it up on the south, southwest corner either. Not if you're going to do a drive-through.
Yeah, I think that you've got to keep as much, all of your pavement open, your parking spaces are exactly what you need and all of that.
If, if it comes down to snow needs to be removed from the site, it's from the site, that's, that's what will happen.
I just don't want to see it there.
I live much further north, we get a lot more snow and that's, it is not unusual to have a condition that snow has to be removed from the site.
Okay. We'll certainly consider that.
Along those lines, I would suggest the board make that a condition if it desires, decides to.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is that we want to have happen, we want to make sure it's a condition that everybody knows about.
Yep.
For approval, I wouldn't want to see it sort of not have any guidance and then the next thing you know, there's snow and, and I need to move a truck. Brian, do you have a comment?
Yeah, at the bottom of the plan that you have here, there, is that a sidewalk or some sort of easement?
It's a sidewalk, it's been moved out onto the edge of the street at the request of the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Let me go to, as I said, the landscaping plan hasn't been updated since I made that change. I was waiting to get through all the issues with the board before I had them.
Sure.
Yeah, sidewalk.
All right, okay.
The better. So the sidewalk's out here now.
Yep.
In the, in the right-of-way.
Got it.
And they requested granite curbing for the portion that's in the right-of-way, that, no problem with that. And the town does have a sewer easement through the front of the parcel, because that's sewer main that runs through there.
Okay. Robert, I would assume after nine meetings, we would have accepted the application and held a public hearing already?
Yes, all of that's been done.
Okay. We can certainly offer an opportunity if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in. It's your chance, no more? Okay. Then board members, I think the applicants presented the information he wants us to know and it's appropriate for us to have deliberations and potential final action. What say you? Lynn?
I feel this is a little bit like, was it McDonald's or what did we do on Continental Boulevard right by?
McDonald's.
Yeah, McDonald's in that the intense use of the site. If it weren't for the drive-through coffee shop, I would have no problem with this at all. But I think when you add that drive-through coffee shop, that just compounds any problems that we were having and not having a drive-through, a bypass lane for fire, to me is a safety issue. And depending upon what's going on, I just, like I said, I have no problem with the tanks and the, and the fuel delivery and adding that to the, the possibilities of the, the plan, so it's not just a car wash, it's, it's a car wash and it's a service station as well, but that coffee shop bothers me because of the, the traffic flow. And I, I appreciate our fire department and I know they, they review all of these things and they're very conscientious about safety. And for them to say that they have a problem with not providing a bypass lane and it's not just providing the bypass lane, but it's, you're having the cars that are coming from the drive-up window approaching the car wash exit, as well as any emergency vehicles, you're merging three things at one point there and I have a problem with that.
Barbara, do you have a comment?
Yeah. You know, this is something that we've said repeatedly about the density of the spot and our concerns with it. And having been a critical care nurse and an EMT, if in fact on the site plan page you have all those cars lined up there and business is brisk, the one thing I've learned is that people do not have their heart attacks in a convenient spot. So I don't see a way, if all of those cars are lined up for their coffee in the morning, on how any ambulance... on how any ambulants would get through there in any record time at all. And I worry about that. I've worried about it since
it's safe.
That was first, you know, talked about on how you would actually get emergency vehicles through there. And yeah, okay, a fire truck, that that presents its own problem. But when you've got a medical emergency, then time is of really of the essence as well. I just don't see how you get through there. I'm sorry. I just don't see it.
I would think in the case of a medical emergency that the remaining cars have their drivers in them and you move them.
The remaining cars may have their drivers in them, but if they're all trying to clear that area at the same time, it's going to take about a good eight to 10 minutes to get all those cars out of there. And and there and that takes somebody off. So out there directing traffic, try to get those cars out there. So and you can consider it being the best scenario you can. But you know what? Best scenarios don't happen in emergencies. So no, you're not going to get those cars out of there in under. I don't know, eight minutes if we're lucky. So I mean, at that point, the only thing left to do is to have our our EMTs running across a parking lot with what equipment they can carry to be able to get to the car that may be first or second in line. It's not a good scenario. Just understand I have concerns about that putting people at risk. It just makes me nervous and I don't want to lose sleep about this at night.
Quick, quick question. Is the fuel stations already approved or is that part of this approval?
Part of this. The only thing that's there today is a car wash.
Well, I know that, but we didn't go through and approve these fuel stations.
No.
This is part of this approval. Okay.
Correct.
So I'm okay with fuel stations and not with the coffee shops.
Other comments or questions? Members of the board? A am supportive of the concerns that Barbara and Lynn raise. I think in some of our larger developments with big apartment buildings, we're already asking ambulances to walk further than the distance would be across these buildings. And so, you know, I don't think that it's the worst developed site in the world, but it does have some concerns where it's a little harder for the ambulances to get to things than the otherwise would. I think that we've heard from the applicant that the coffee shop is important to the viability of the business. And again, it's much like the it is the question about the bypass lane. It's sort of a go or no go. If we tell the applicant, you got to have it. There's just nowhere to nowhere to make that happen and it kills the project. With that in mind, you know, in the whatever moments we have left between a motion and a vote, I'm on the fence whether I would support it or whether that concern about the safety would make me vote no.
I'm looking at the site right now. There's a car wash there. I'm in and out of there all the time. I love having it there. And it's viable. Now, if you add the fuel stations, that means it's even more viable as a business because you're adding significant improvements there. I don't think there's a need for the coffee shop to make this business viable. I could be wrong. It's not my business. I don't pretend to know the business. I can only, you know, acquiesce to the the owners to say we need this, but I just, I think adding the fuel stations adds to it. I just have a problem with the the drive through.
I think I'd characterize it a little differently for myself. It's not so much that I have an opinion about the coffee being a good or bad part of this. You have whatever you want if you can fit it in the site within our regulations. And right now it's not fitting in with within the regulations. But to have a bypass lane as the fire department would like. Does anyone else have an opinion? Any more discussion? Is there a motion? Do you have any further discussion or comments on sort of where we're at with things?
I guess I need some clarification if the boards, did the board say that they were okay with the encroaching over the curbs?
Actually, I don't think that we fully addressed that. So maybe that's a discussion that we could have. What has been presented to us in the memo and in the material from the applicant tonight is that the lengthy overhangs on the front or back of a big truck swing out over the curbs and perhaps bit of the grass as they turn, not that the wheels are going over curbs. And are we okay with that being a part of a approved turning plan? My personal view is I don't think it troubles me at all that the overhang of the truck do that. The only question is you're asking drivers to be perfect every time. You know, and and sort of never misjudge that or or start their turn a little earlier, a little late. Because there isn't any give if you're already hanging it out over the curb.
And you're not backing up.
What's that?
Then you're not backing up.
Yeah, no, you won't be able to back up now. The biggest truck is the is the fuel truck that brings it in there and that driver, you know, hearing from the applicant that it's a trained person that knows the site and that they get in and out of tighter sites. I believe that.
But the the tanker is not going on the outside, which is where the overhang happens. The tanker is just going around the fuel stations.
Where's the, can you show me your your turning radius plan again and point out where the encroachments on curbs are?
So encroachments on the curbs occur here. As I swung this this bus to the far side of this entrance. So if they come in earlier, there's no encroachment.
So that's the front bumper of the bus or truck or whatever that is.
Front overhang
Yep.
Of the of the bus going through. What's that? Well, it comes, it comes out of the turning lane. This project involves adding a turning lane.
But I thought you were having the tanker come in.
The tanker is going to come in this side.
Right.
It'll come from the turning lane and in this side.
And where's where's the encroachment on curbs at that point? Do you have any?
Not for the tanker.
Not for the tanker. The tanker that's the only the encroachment as for the tanker is coming in off the near lane.
But they're not coming in that way.
They're not coming in that way and they're coming and they're coming from the center lane, not from the right hand lane.
Exiting, is there any encroachment?
No.
Okay, so you have an encroachment on curbs if you have a bus or a fire truck.
Correct.
Coming in there, but it's.
And then.
Is it always in the front or are there encroachments elsewhere?
These lines in they it's it's there's lines shows the worst case scenario of either the front or the back. It doesn't specify which it is. And then kind of through here.
Yep.
It encroaches a little bit over the edge of the lawn right there. Because in order for a fire truck to exit the site, because it can't make this
Right.
This hard turn, they have to loop around the canopy and then they're they're lined up straight and headed out of the site.
So a fire truck is going to come out the by the past the coffee shop.
Yep.
Turn left to go past the fire. The fuel stations.
It's gonna go, yeah, it's gonna go all the way across the site. And then it's gonna turn back.
Around that way. Okay.
Back up this way and then turn that gets them looking straight down.
Yeah, I don't like it. Sorry.
You put one car in there and you got a problem.
Yep. You got a couple of cars in there.
I mean, there's a 24 foot aisle through there.
Yep.
It it stays within the aisle except.
I don't have a problem with the aisle. I'm just.
And are you showing an overlap with the retaining wall in the back? Because I don't think that has much give to it.
It gets close to it, but it doesn't, it doesn't
Hit.
Hit it.
Okay.
You hope.
And again, I pushed it all the way to the back. There's there's some room. There's some room for to for the truck to be more centered. There's also room to push it and let the overhang swing out farther around that corner.
And it's also overhang in the handicap spot?
Yeah.
Yep.
So if there's a car there.
There's a car there, but again, there's plenty of space because that's just that's coming up this inside. Again, if it's pushed to the out and makes a larger turn. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of space in the back there to maneuver.
So I think there is, and with with the fire and the ambulance, they have the benefit of sirens. And your fuel truck's going to come at night and that will sort of affect the rest of the traffic there. But if I show up there with a, you know, a 22 foot U-Haul truck towing their biggest trailer and I don't know how to back up anything and I don't know how to make turns. Because I'm Joe six pack that just rented the thing from U-Haul.
I need I need to fill up.
I need to fill up my truck. What does that guy's turning radiuses look like?
You're not going in there.
Ugly.
You're driving by.
Well, a lot of times you are, but I mean, if you need fuel and you don't know where else to go.
Yeah.
I mean, this this whole space over the you drive, oh, this whole area back on top of these tanks and come in, pull up to it there and pull out. I mean, this is for a gas station. This is standard design. And this are these are wide lanes.
I have no problem with the gas with the gas pumps.
But you think the U-Haul guy's not going to have any trouble either?
No.
Okay.
Well, it depends on who's driving.
You know, it's it's everybody's driving. It's somebody that might be good at it. It might be, you know, somebody that's never gotten behind a wheel of a truck anymore. It's kind of the challenge with U-Hauls. You don't need any special license.
I can't back up a trailer and I find my way through things.
You go someplace else.
I go someplace that I know that I can turn around.
Yeah.
It's smart. People do, but you know, everybody else drives U-Hauls too. And if you ever do one of those ones with the car on it where the car is two wheels on the trailer and two wheels off, those are impossible to back up even three feet.
I wouldn't even attempt that.
Nor should anybody with a brain, but if it needs fuel and and moving through town, you'll have somebody try it anyway.
And that's when the fire department's going to have to come in.
Come in and untangle that mess. All right, as far as the curb encroachments, I don't really have a problem with it as long as it's not knocking over landscape or a sign or something like that. I think those little encroachments don't bother me.
Since we're talking trucks. So got a coffee shop, you're going to have deliveries for equipment, supplies, et cetera. They're going to be during the day, so that'll be a mess too, because if there's cars in that lane, he's got almost, how does he even get to the coffee shop?
They're gonna have to park in the parking lot and and hand truck things over there.
Yep.
But their their hand truck path is going to be through your two drive through lanes.
Right.
Be across, it'll be across the, the door for the coffee shop is in the back. It'll be, it'll be across, it'll be across the 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 opening to the car wash.
Other discussion by members of the board? If not, is any member of the board prepared to make a motion?
So I guess the last thing I want to clarify is bypass lane.
I think that's going to get shaken out right here. That that may be what the what the board votes on right here in a second. Motions?
I guess my question would be, can we approve this without the coffee shop or is it all or nothing?
I I think if it's the board's intention to ask the applicant to propose it without the coffee shop, we should ask the applicant to do that without voting on it.
And I would have to go to the owner and
Yep.
Pass them.
And if you if you move and conduct a vote, it's a, yeah, it's an approval with conditions or it's a denial.
I would suggest we I hate to deny it, but I I don't like the intensity as I've stated.
Well, then we can be continued one meeting.
If we can be continued to a meeting and get rid of that if they are willing to do that and think that the just having the the gas fill ups is sufficient for their business. Then I would say come back in future meeting.
Am I allowed to ask for a straw poll?
Yeah, you can. We'll give you a straw poll if you want. Generally speaking, board members, to the extent you're willing, offer the applicant a sense of whether you would vote up or down if we had a vote tonight on this.
Down.
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 Yeah, I'm torn.
I think it's a little intense. I'd prefer to see it without the coffee shop.
Same.
I I prefer to see it without a coffee shop. I'm I'm also like Brian torn. But with the number of no's that you heard, it doesn't matter whether I'm torn or not.
I got four that I heard, so that's, that's majority.
Wouldn't matter if I was torn. And so I think the advice to your client is that if they're willing to consider removing the 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 drive through coffee shop or in some way configuring it for two lanes, if that was ever possible, I don't think it is, but.
There's a retaining wall at the back.
Right.
Precludes that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the other things that are going on with this business. If there was a coffee shop convenience store in the space where the car wash is sitting, you got room for everything you want. You know, if you like the coffee shop a lot, maybe the car wash is the thing that shouldn't be.
I like adding.
If I was planning on demoing the the car wash and rebuilding the site.
No, 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 I like the car wash.
I don't know which part.
I can probably fit the two uses, but
I use the car.
I have to work around an existing car.
I'm not making an economic decision for the applicant. Obviously, that's up to them, but it seems like they want three things in a, you know, space that will fit two.
And we came in with three.
Pick two.
I like having, I like having the the fuel stations there. Like I said, I use the car wash and to be able to get fuel at the same time you get the car wash. That to me is is very convenient. If that's sufficient, I love it.
Yeah, I will go back to the applicant and ask him that question.
I know we've asked before and you've answered it before, but where did the vacuum machines go?
They're now located here.
Oh, okay, those little wide dividers.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be on the islands.
Gotcha.
Are those necessary?
The vacuums?
Yeah.
Oh, I love having the vacuums that are.
I never use.
If I go to a car wash, I always go to the vacuum.
Never mind.
It's not all about, you know, what what I prefer, but it's what you guys want to see.
Use it for anything. I don't want my vacuum to suck up.
Um, our, how much time do you need to sort?
I should just one meeting. I'm just gonna have a conversation and I mean, if they come back with, we'll remove the coffee shop, then you know, we'll accept the condition that we revise the plan that those go away because you've seen everything else on this site.
Our August 1st meeting is our next meeting. I don't know when the deadlines for submissions are, but it currently has no other items on that agenda.
Yeah, the deadline's already passed, so that's why we're going to talk to you about canceling that meeting tonight.
Okay, so that meeting, we'd have to put them for the second August meeting if they.
Preferably, unless the board wants to come in for one quick item and leave, but yeah, right now.
I don't, I don't need to submit anything. You know, because we would have the condition that revised plans just have that removed. Because it's somewhat not integral to the rest of the site. It doesn't change the parking.
Your deadline for submission is passed for that meeting.
And what I'm saying is we don't need to submit anything. All I needed to do is come back with an answer from the owner of whether we want you to vote with or without the the coffee shop.
Right, so
Can we do that?
You could. And then from that point, if hypothetically, the owner says, yeah, we'll remove the coffee shop, I would recommend not voting on approval. You'd still need to have him come back and redesign it, show your design without the coffee shop on it.
Okay, so.
You're all right with that?
Yeah, so if the applicant wanted to have us vote without the coffee shop, we'd still need more meetings. So we don't have to rush to August 1st. If that doesn't get us any any further down the path quickly. I think if we were going without the coffee shop, seeing what the turning radiuses and all that stuff looks like without the coffee shop is part of our job.
No, it doesn't. Doesn't change.
Well, there's more room for it.
Well, the coffee that's on the backside of the building.
Yeah.
So everything, basically everything to the left side of the car wash would go away.
More room for landscaping.
Yep. Yeah, potentially so. Okay.
You may not be willing to to put additional landscaping in if you lose the revenue from it.
So our our second meeting in August is the 15th of August. What's the will of the board?
So move.
Move to continue to August 15th with no further notice to abutters. Is there a second? Second.
Robert, what's the mission deadline for that?
Give me just a second. It would be July 25.
July.
Next Thursday.
Oh, it's for their deadline. Okay.
Yeah, next Tuesday, I think it is.
All right, I'll I'll talk to my client tomorrow and I'll call you and we can figure it out from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of continuing to August 15th with no further notice to abutters, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Can you clarify who made the motion second on that? I was looking.
Barbara, second. Brian made the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, item Okay, item four on our agenda is Jonathan and Patricia Shapany Shapany and Matthew and Teresa Fletcher Family Trust, review for acceptance and consideration of a four-lot subdivision. The parcels are located at eleven and twelve Harrington Drive in the R one residential by map district, tax map five B lot two forty one and two forty two. Case planning board twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Uh, this is just a standard lot line adjustment subdivision where you're taking two lots that currently front on Harrington. They're accessed via Harrington. They also have frontage in the backside along Old Blood. So basically, the applicant's proposing a lot line adjustment between these two and then a subdivision to create two additional new building lots along that will front on Old Blood with the existing house lots remaining accessed by Harrington.
Thank you, Robert. Matt, good to see you. Introduce yourself for the record and tell us about your proposal.
All right, good evening. Matt Peterson with Keach Norris and Associates here representing the proposed subdivision for the owners at eleven and twelve Harrington Drive in Merrimack, New Hampshire. Just to give you a quick overview on the aerial here, the two houses on Harrington is one here. Then the other one is located right here. And then Old Blood Road runs down along here. And we're basically posing a lot in the trees here and a lot in the trees here. The two lots are located off Harrington Drive with frontage also on Old Blood Road. The Harrington Drive subdivision was created about twenty-three years ago and was permitted by my boss Steve Keach at the time. The lots are seven point three seven acres and the other one is seven point two five acres in size. That is right here. So one lot starts at the cul-de-sac here, makes its way all the way down to Old Blood. Comes out this direction here to the west, comes all the way back down and then back to Harrington Drive. The second lot starts up in here on the right side. It comes to the east, then goes all the way down to Old Blood, makes its way all the way down Old Blood and then back up. So those lots are seven point three seven and seven point two five in size. Um, I was informed that about twenty-three years ago, that these two lots, there was reasons why they didn't do them. Most likely, what I'm getting from Steve is that at the time that Harrington Drive was put in, Old Blood Road was really not up to any standard. That would have made it kind of the same as what they were posing on Harrington. So they didn't push the road through because they would have, number one, had to upgrade the road and number two, the entrance for coming into their development, I guess, is what they were not looking for. However, if you take a look at this plan, it was pretty obvious to me that they intended that if Old Blood Road ever did get up to par and that water and stuff like it was there, to cut these off and that it would be able to be done. So with that, the owner came to me, geez, when did we start? About a year ago? About a year ago to see what we could do. So we took a few steps. We went out and mapped the wetlands. First, we did need one variant. The variance is for the lot on the west side here. This one only has thirty-eight thousand square feet of contiguous area. However, it has a total of over a hundred and four thousand square feet of upland. This little wetland here and obviously the wetland right here don't allow it to be contiguous all the way through. Um, but we have a big enough area for a home located here and we were given the variance for this lot. The other lot to our west has a pretty big building area as well, sits in this location here, where we proposed homes basically at both these two locations off of Old Blood Road. The new lots that we're proposing are basically taking the two and creating four. Map forty-one is was seven point two five will be two point oh acres, which will be right here. Lot two forty-two was seven point three seven acres. That'll be approximately five point six eight acres. Comes down around here. Two forty-one one is up in this location. This will be two point eight two acres with a hundred and nine thousand square feet of contiguous. And then the new lot is over here, has three point three two acres, and again, it has the thirty-eight thousand contiguous and was given the variance. The only other thing we put into this plan set is the topographic subdivision plan. You can see we also have power lines through the both properties here and you can see that in the aerial pretty clearly. But this shows the topo, shows the wetlands going through the property, obviously picked everything up on Old Blood Road. And that's kind of it. Again, this seems to be about as clean as a re-subdivision of lots as I've seen twenty-nine years kind of doing this, but I'm sure there's some comments and questions, so I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions? If, oh, I touched, sorry, hand up. Is there a motion to determine the application's complete?
I'll second.
Motion by Council Healy, second by Vice Chair Christensen.
That's scary.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to find the applications complete. Do you have any questions of the applicant about the proposal in general?
Makes sense.
Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward or to the microphone there behind you or introduce yourself and then tell us what's on your mind.
I am Stefan Dipinas, eleven Old Blood Road. I am the one who actually presented to the town council to have Old Blood Road paved because the street was deteriorating. And with that, Mr. Tenhave bought the last session, so the town flipped the money, advanced the money, got the money back from Mr. Tenhave. And and in the process, I'm the only one in Old Blood Road who has town water because the water came from Lindellane. So they did an easement on my property to get the fire hydrants done. I could have said no, but I was very gracious to to have this development done. My only question is, the subdivision now into the four lots, will the driveway entrance, we, all of these four potential lots where houses will be built, be on Old Blood Road or will two be on Old Blood Road and two in Harrington?
Two and two. We'll let the applicant answer that, but it looks like two and two. So they don't answer it now. They, when all the testimony is done, they'll answer it for us.
I have no objection to that. I think this is fine. You know, this is not like a cluster development up the street. Three acres a lot is a lot, plenty, and I'm, you know, I just want to put my voice here that I live close by. I've met Jonathan recently. I've met Matthew recently, and I fully approve it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Are there other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay, closed public hearing. Matt, you want to respond to the question? I think we hit the answer already, two and two.
Right, exactly. You've got two existing. Actually, one of them is a common drive down here for two homes off of Harrington, and then the other one comes off of Harrington. So then we're just proposing two new driveways off of Old Blood Road.
And the the on the lot to the left, it's the buildable areas just in that one corner?
Yes.
Okay.
We proposed kind of something along these lines to the zoning board, so they probably sit something like that.
Okay.
This isn't his building program yet, but he might have zoned.
Yeah, sure, obviously.
Schematic.
Not hold you to it because that's not part of our level of approval. Other comments or questions by board members? What's the will of the board?
I make a motion to find that with the proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary and further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to the recommendations. Conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated July seventh, fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Council Healy? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Let's see, agenda is here. Fidelity Investments is the applicant and FMR Merrimack Realty Trust, FID, is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a waiver of full site plan review to permit utility upgrades on the Fidelity campus. The parcels located at One Spartan Way in the I two industrial and aquifer conservation districts and wellhead protection area, tax map three C lot one ninety-one. Case planning board twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just as a quick summary, this project is electrical upgrades. They're basically proposing to, as I understood it, run some electrical infrastructure from the existing solar field to the One Spartan Way building. The main reason that this is here is because the applicant's proposing to do above-ground wires, which is in conflict with the site plan regulations, which requires underground. So they're requesting a waiver of full site plan and should the board feel that it is appropriate to grant that, then the requirement to have underground utilities would be wrapped into that waiver, so they'd be allowed to do above-ground as they're proposing.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing.
Good evening. My name is Mark Barostic. I'm a project engineer with VHB. I'm here tonight with Ken Dodd from Fidelity. As Robert said, we're here for a site plan amendment for the Fidelity campus in Merrimack to construct some utility improvements. It's highlighted in gray on the on the overall plan. Sorry. Here, the, I'll switch to the next. Sheet here. So the electrical improvements will, there's an existing overhead electric service to the campus across the Effie Everett turnpike in this location here. And what the proposal is, is to, there's some upgrades to a switchgear near the One Spartan Way building here. And in conjunction with that, running a new electrical feed from the overhead that comes across Effie Everett up the old former toll road at the back of the campus to that switchgear. That'll allow the campus additional resiliency for their for their power, for the for One Spartan Way. As Robert mentioned, we've we've requested a waiver from full site plan review. There are no proposed buildings or uses or increased impervious areas. It's really a utility improvement project. And because mainly there's some areas of of ledge along that toll road that makes it difficult to to install underground, we're proposing over overhead wires. It's approximately thirty-two hundred feet of overhead wires and utility poles to connect, to connect those two locations. The, in addition, some of the utility poles will be within the the buffer zone to to wetlands. So these are zoomed in site plans of the route. This is up near where the switchgear work will occur. So we will be going before the Conservation Commission to discuss those the work within the fifty-foot buffer. It'll just be installation of utility poles. And it's another reason for the overhead, you know, in support of the overhead is, you know, we won't be digging long trenches alongside the the wetlands. I'll be over it. I guess the final thing is, you know, there won't be any, there won't be any direct wetland impacts associated with it's all buffer impacts associated with the poles. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Board members, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, so the power you're going to be grabbing from is is from across the highway?
No, it's it's already across the highway. It comes across. Sorry.
So this is, you're not taking power from the from the solar array that you just?
That's correct. It's not. It's not tied into the solar array specifically. It's from the the existing Eversource lines.
And when they ran all that over to the building, did they run all that underground?
That goes to a different location on campus underground. But it's, it does not go to the same location.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah. Yep.
I'm sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
So now I'm confused. So is this an existing building that you're running this to?
Yes.
Yes.
And it already has power?
Correct.
So why is this going on?
It's for resiliency so that, you know, they can have redundant power to the building to, you know, avoid outages and downtime.
Are you the applicant? Sure. Come on, come forward to the table. Once you get settled in, introduce yourself and then tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. Ken Dodd and with Fidelity Investments, real estate organization, responsible for operations on the campus. Uh, as as Mark mentioned, there's a couple of parts to this project. There's replacing that switchgear, which goes back to nineteen seventy-seven and needs to be replaced. And as part of that, we've chosen to to add this particular line, which gives us two primary long-term benefits to the campus. One is it adds a second power source for One Spartan Way, which currently is only single-fed from Eversource. Two-Contra Way is dual-fed because it has a data center in it today. It also gives us some long-term flexibility to possibly swap the solar farm, which currently provides power to Two Contra Way, over to One Spartan Way as our building loads change and we want to take maximum advantage of the investment.
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions about that? Okay, Robert, I'm looking in the memo and I don't see a question of, oh, there it is, completeness. What is the will of the board with respect to the question of completeness?
Waivers first.
Not sure that I buy into that notion of how how we've got to do that, but it is a waiver of full site plan review, so it's a combined question of completeness and waiver of full site plan review. Lynn?
I move we approve. I need voice. I move we approve the waiver proposed and approve the waiver of full site plan.
Waiver full site plan review and accept the application as statutory support is strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship or?
That would that would be the one.
Okay, is there a second for Lynn's motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to both waive full site plan review and accept the application as complete. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the application's complete. Does the board have any other questions of the applicant for review? Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Board members, if you have no further discussion, are you prepared to take final action on the proposal? Is there a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I thought Barbara wanted to.
Yeah.
Oh, I do. Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Make motion to find that with the granted waiver of full site plan review and the recommended conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary and further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated July fourteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven on our agenda is Michael Courier as the applicant and owner and the Merrimack Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at seventy-five A and fifty-nine Wire Road in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map six C lot two thirty-one dash one and tax map six D, lot five twenty-six dash one. It's our case planning board twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the, I guess, applicants?
Just by a quick way of summary, this is a simple lot line adjustment proposing to take about eight acres of land from the existing Jehovah Witness property on Wire Road to transfer it to Mr. Courier's property next door. Late this afternoon, the applicant did submit a waiver request, which I do believe you have a letter from Meridian in front of you. So that is a waiver request to not provide concrete monuments in the, I think it's from the frontage corners. I didn't get a full chance to read the whole thing yet, but that is a waiver request. It does need to be acted on.
All right, please introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Yeah, so Trevor Yendo with Meridian Land Services, and I'm here with Michael Courier as well, as owner and applicant. Should I touch on the waiver request first or can I go, you want me to go through the entire?
Go through the application generally first because we'll get to completeness and then we'll do waivers after that.
Okay, understood. So the proposal in and of itself involves two lots, lot six C two thirty-one dash one, which I will refer to as the Courier Lot. And then six D five twenty-six dash one to the south, which I'll refer to as the Church Lot. The proposal seeks to adjust the common lot line. It's shown in pink on my my board there. The proposed lot line is in blue. Parcel A is the area that would be transferred from the Church Lot to the Courier Lot. It's just over eight acres of mostly undevelopable, either floodplain or wetland. It's just over eight acres of mostly undevelopable, either floodplain or wetland area. Both lots will remain fully compliant with, with zoning. I believe the, the Courier Lot was approved as a reduced frontage lot back in 97, so I guess that would be the one exception to that. But where the total area of the Courier Lot would result in 24 and a half acres approximately and then three and a half acres for the Church Lot. It's really kind of the, the gist of the proposal as far as the waiver request. My office did prepare the subdivision plan for 6D 526 that created the Church Lot back in 2010 or 11. So that portion of, of this project is essentially fully monumented and we have recoverable monumentation to depict the area of land to be transferred accurately. The Michael's Lot, we, we did not locate monuments on the northern corners, but there are plot plans on record that indicate that the monuments have been set when his house was constructed, I believe in 99. And those plans were on file at, at the town. So the gist, the waiver is that we don't feel that it's necessary to depict all of the monumentation on the northern portion of the Courier Lot and feel that what we have is accurate and enough to, to depict this land swap from a surveying standpoint. So, and we feel that the waiver request would carry out the spirit and intent of the ordinance and that it's not really necessary to locate those monuments at this point.
So the, the waiver is asking to not locate monuments along the northern edge. It looks like there'd be four monuments along that edge because they're there, but we just didn't go looking for them and find them or we think they're there because the plan said so and they're?
Trevor, grab the, the hand mic behind you.
Yeah, you can grab that and walk around with it if you want.
There you go.
Let's just work.
So the ones that we would be essentially requesting that we don't necessarily need to show on, on the plan are from this right-of-way corner up to here. So one, two, three, four, five, this radius has another one here and this monument as well. We located the monuments here and they've either, we've either located or set the entirety, well, not, not in the river, obviously, but up to this Thai course here that fully defines this parcel, which is really the subject of the application. We're not, yeah.
So those, those monuments that we're talking about for the waiver, you, you mentioned that you've noted plans exist that say those were set, but just as a matter of efficiency, didn't go and survey and look for them. Is that right? Okay, so they may be there.
They, well, there's, there is a plot plan from 99 that indicates they were set at the time that the home was constructed and the plot plan was issued and stamped, so.
And so the waiver is just for the?
It's a portion, yeah.
Okay, you're on the blue line, which is the new lot line, you're setting monuments at those corners, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And I actually have a, sorry, this is just a blow up of really the area that we're, we're working with. So lot line to be eliminated here and then the proposed line and these green dots are either monuments that were located or will be set or have been set at this time.
It's sort of gathered from some of the reaction in the public that they're having difficulty seeing that plan. If you need to get up and look at it, feel free to get up, take a look, do whatever you need to do. Don't worry about disturbing us if you need to walk up to it and, and see what it's about. I think probably can also put one of the printed copies kind of out there for the, I'm going to pass that around for folks to be able to have and look at too. Yep.
Trevor, we, we've got?
Got a laser.
Ah, hey, this is me. That's why you elected me. Okay? The church owns this property now, is that correct?
Yes.
And what you're doing is you're just cut, drawing a line and putting this section of it into the Courier's. Thank you.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Planning Board members, what is the will of the board with respect to the request for the waiver related to the monuments? Discussion wise, I certainly have no problem with their request. I don't personally, but you may.
There's no, there's nothing to worry about in the future for the Courier property if they don't record the northern side on the prints now.
It doesn't create any new problem that they didn't already exist. There probably are monuments there, but if they're not there, that problem is already existing and we're not making use.
So when they, when you divide this, you have to submit a new, a new print to the new plot plan?
If you did what? If you?
If this is approved, then they have to submit another plan, like another plot plan to the registry of deeds?
Yes, this will get recorded, the registry deeds.
But then we don't have to mark the northern side of his property again?
They're showing it on the plan. They're just saying we didn't go out in the field and find the granite monuments or iron pins.
Okay, yeah, just.
Yeah, nothing changed with where they're located.
Just the addition of the other ones.
Yeah. And, and for all we know, the folks in 99 did their job and those are out there and nobody looked for them. Other comments or questions about the waiver? Is there a motion to consider granting or denying the waiver?
I move we grant the waiver.
Statutory condition to the unnecessary hardship one?
Yep.
So the first statutory criteria?
Yes.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second to grant the waiver? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the proposal?
Hi, Martin Lyons, 63, Wire Road. What's, what's the proposed, I guess, use of the additional property to the Courier compound?
We will, when we stop taking public testimony, we'll have the applicant address that and, you know, get an answer for that for you. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. You want to address whatever it is that you know about the potential use of the property? And before you do, I have to note that from the planning board's standpoint, that isn't a factor that we can consider, but if you want to share the information for the public, go ahead.
The intent in speaking with Michael is for recreation, walking, just additional air. And I know the church doesn't have a use for the, the property either, so it was kind of an opportunity for him to kind of expand where he can recreate. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Likes real estate, wants more of it.
Yeah, well, we have a horse farm, so we have planned to just clean it up, put trails. As I indicated on the letter that it's, there's a lot of blowdown and stuff in there that can potentially fire hazards being a previous fire chief. I think we need to start cleaning up some of those areas, right, John? So that's one of the aspects in there. It's just, it's more of just a natural piece of the property.
Excellent, thank you. Robert?
Don't recall a vote for completeness, a vote for completeness having happened yet.
I think we did that though, didn't we?
We got a waiver vote.
We did the waiver.
Then we'll, let's get back in the correct order. Let's do completeness first.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the vote on the waiver has to happen after completeness, so let's do that again.
Wins are set, okay.
What's that?
So the waiver was all set because?
Out of order though.
Agree to disagree.
Out of, whatever.
We're good.
It's fine. Okay. Public hearing, any recommendations by the board? Discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to find that with the proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary and further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to the recommend, the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated July 14, 2023.
Is there a second for Neil's motion? Barbara has that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven on our agenda is Dartree Zebolus LLC. As the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a two-story, 15,000-square-foot office warehouse building with associated site improvements. The parcel's located at 101 Herrick Street in the C2 General Commercial, I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3D 2 Lot 20, Case Planning Board 2023-20. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before here from the applicant?
The applicant has requested a continuance.
What is the will of the board with respect to the continuance to September 5?
To September 5 with no further notice to abutters.
Second.
Motion and a second to continue to September 5. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Checking off that agenda item? Okay. Item eight on our agenda is a public hearing for those per zoning ordinance amendments. What's that? As referred by the town council, proposing the repeal of Section 2.02.4.D., mixed-use developments permitted in the I-1 district by conditional use permit, and the correction of section numbers in the remainder of Section 2.02.4. Robert, what do we need to know before we hear, we have a public hearing?
So what I think it would be best is if I actually read Tim's memo into the record just so everybody has an absolutely clear understanding as to what's going on since this did not get initiated by the planning board.
And Mr. Chair?
You want to read the whole thing?
Mr. Chair, before that happens, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay.
Recuse myself. As this is, was business of the council and I've already been party to that.
Okay.
So I'll be back.
So you are recused. That leaves five of us. Now, Robert, it won't stop you from reading whatever you think we ought to have in the record, but you're talking about reading the whole memo?
No, not the entire, just basically summary outlining why this is here. Because while we did send notice out to all of the people that this would affect, and that's why I think you see a few of them here, they don't necessarily have the full background as to how this came about.
Okay. Go get them.
So please find attached, as you see, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance initiated by the town council and referred to the planning board for the statutorily required public hearing and recommendation, which I'll outline below. Spurred by the recent conditional approval of the amendment to the mixed-use conditional use permit for the Merrimack Park Place project, and after considering the types of projects that have resulted from the recent changes from initial proposals for mixed-use projects, the council has decided to pursue the attached zoning ordinance amendments. Building on the comments that Tim made to the planning board about not immediately initiating modifications to the mixed-use development section of the ordinance on June 20th, the goal of the council is to temporarily pause the development of future mixed-use projects until such time as the town has had an opportunity to develop an update to the master plan. By repealing the section on mixed-use developments, the town can undertake an updated master plan process, which will provide appropriate guidance and policy direction before any new mixed-use developments are proposed and to prevent unintended development through amendments to existing mixed-use projects. The council feels strongly that unintended consequences of residential density and shrinking amounts of non-residential square footage in decisions from recent years is sufficient justification for the pause on mixed-use projects until new ordinance language is developed following the master plan process. In addition to the repeal of the mixed-use section, there are longstanding numbering errors in the section, numbers that follow mixed-use section of the ordinance and subsequent sections that, et cetera, would be renumbered. Skipping ahead slightly, essentially, I'm just going to go into the process for what we're doing, which again, as covered in the legal notices, to repeal fully the conditional, mixed-use conditional use permit section and subsequently renumber those other sections. RSA 675-2 states that the charter adopted by the voters should describe how to amend the zoning ordinance and at a minimum requires the planning board to hold a public hearing prior to any amendment pursuant to RSA 675:7. The town charter addresses this in two ways. Section 11-5 states that land use ordinances, which would include the zoning ordinance, are to be adopted and amended pursuant to New Hampshire law, and Section 4-8 enumerates the powers of the council, conferring on the council all the powers of the town meeting, among others, except for passage of the town budget. In this instance, because the town council has drafted, initiated, and referred the zoning amendments to the planning board pursuant to RSA 675:3, paragraph 1, the planning board must hold a public hearing but may not make changes to the proposed amendments and may only vote to recommend or not recommend. Regardless of the planning board's vote to recommend or not, the amendments are required to be sent to the town council with the planning board's recommendation for final action. Once back at the town council following the planning board's public hearing recommendation, the council will follow Charter Section 5 to formally take action on the proposed amendments in the form of an ordinance, starting with ensuring the amendments are in proper ordinance format, followed by the first reading, notice of public hearing to be followed by public hearing with the council, and finally, second reading and vote by the council to either adopt or reject. Is the planning board clear on what is happening tonight?
No, but, no, I got it, but actually, I've got a number of legal questions and I'm reading the statutes that are cited in the memo and they don't seem to correspond with the instructions that were given in the memo. But anyway, I'll sort of address that in a second. Board members, before we open up a public hearing, I do have questions about what we're doing and what we're about, and I would benefit from some consult with our legal counsel about what's being proposed and what's the basis of it and the procedure that we're supposed to follow. And I think there's also potentially, we'll hear from some of the members of the public, I don't know what impact this has on existing properties and projects that have been approved under this ordinance going forward. I also recall that, I actually was hoping Nelson was here tonight, this particular zoning, as it relates to the site that sort of spurred this, was adopted by a vote of the public and was the result, involved a Supreme Court appeal. And I'd like to sort of understand more about those origins before I decide whether anybody ought to recommend doing something other than what the voters had done, if, if in fact, this is something that's sourced from voters. And so those are a couple of the legal questions that I have. As a result of that, whether we conduct a public hearing or not, I would propose that we obtain some counsel before making a recommendation on this ordinance, if that is the will of the board.
We can continue this too.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out and looking up the 675-2 and 675-3, and I don't see the language about, that's cited here and how the recommendations. It sounds like that language came from somewhere, but it's not from this section of that statute. And I'm trying to figure out what, what, if we're obligated to hold a hearing, what's the timeline for us to do so? And I don't see that here because it's not the right section of the statute. 675:3, Roman numeral 1, says, "Any town not operating under the town council form of government, or any village district which is specifically authorized by law to enact a zoning ordinance," so right there, we, we're not either of those things, so I don't know why we're in that boat at all, but, "shall establish and amend a zoning ordinance, historic district ordinance, or building code upon the affirmative vote by ballot of a majority of the legal voters present and voting on the day of the meeting as provided in paragraph 7. Any proposed zoning ordinance as submitted by a planning board or an amendment to an existing zoning ordinance as proposed by a planning board, board of selectmen or village district commission shall be submitted to the voters of the town or village district in the manner prescribed in this section." Now, none of that has anything to do with us because we're not that form of government and we don't submit these to voters, and so I'm confused trying to align the memo, and that's one of the things I want some advice on from our legal counsel is, you know, what, is this just a typo and we're referring to the wrong statute? Or, and I looked at the other related statute, which is 675:2, and it does not deal with, it doesn't have a deadline in it for when this hearing would be. It sounds like it's the right statute. 675-2 says, "In cities or towns operating under the town council form of government and in counties in which there are located unincorporated towns or unorganized places." unorganized places, the local legislative body shall determine the manner in which a zoning ordinance, historic district or a building code is established or amended, provided however that any question concerning the establishment and amendment of a zoning ordinance, historic district ordinance or building code may be placed on a ballot separate from the ballot used to elect city or town officers. The planning board shall forward to the town clerk all proposed amendments to a zoning ordinance, historic district or building code not later than the fifth Tuesday prior to, et cetera. And then the only other part of that statute says, no zoning ordinance or building code shall be established or amended at, until after a public hearing is held according to six seventy-five seven. Um, anyway, and maybe six seventy-five seven is where the answer is to this, but whatever it is, I can't align the, the memo with what it says we're supposed to be doing, and I'd like to get some counsel on lots of things, but that is one of them.
Interestingly enough, the six seventy-five two citation did come from legal counsel, so I guess I would need some clarification there further.
Yeah, six seventy-five two, it seems to be correctly cited here and it does.
Yeah.
Refer to the charter piece, but the six seventy-five three down below about, uh, us having a hearing and we may not make changes and may only vote to recommend or not recommend. And I think that probably is what the law requires of us, but not that law. And, um, I don't know what timeline we've got for when we've got to do that.
When we went to, prior to going to town council, any zoning ordinances, changes to them were put on the warrant and voted on with the town meeting. They were not, they were discussed at, at the deliberative session, but they weren't changed, but they were put on the warrant. And when you went to the, the voting session where you were actually voting on all of the ballot issues that were on the, the warrant, the zoning issues, any changes to there were on the ballot at that point. When we went to town council, that was removed and the town council was given the responsibility of making any changes to zoning ordinances. It no longer was the legislative body.
Yeah, all of that makes sense, although this notion of what we're charged with doing is, we're on kind of.
Yeah, I can't help you with that. I can just.
Yeah, so we, we don't know if we can continue this, is where we're at?
Oh, I think that we can continue it to get some legal advice and we, that's what I'm in favor of doing if the rest of the board thinks that's the thing to do. Um, and we'll certainly open up the public hearing to have input from anybody here that wishes to do so. Um, so we've got the benefit of that, but, um, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and we understand the, the legal aspects of it, what impact it has on the existing entities that are out in the field. Um, you know, for example, if, uh, if the Gilbert Crossing is one of them, Edgbrook Heights is one of them and, um, and Merrimack Premium Outlets and Slate are another one of them. Um, if Gilbert Crossing needed to amend its conditional use permit, but you've deleted it from the statute.
You can't.
Um, they may be out of luck. Um, and maybe that's the result that everybody wants, maybe it's not, but I, I don't know that to be the case, and that's what I want to have legal advice about. Um, I know that they would certainly be grandfathered and they could continue to do what they're doing, but.
They can't change.
We've had eleven different amendments to CUPs over the years. They're always amended every time you turn around. Um, and, and does this affect their rights? I don't know. Um, but I think we have to know that before we can decide whether we recommend it or not. Um, I think that's one of the questions. And then I want to understand this question about what the voters did in two thousand and eight or nine to create this, this ordinance in the first place. And I don't know that that affects whether there's a change in the authority to repeal this, but it certainly affects my, uh, recommendation one way or the other, and I'd be reluctant to recommend doing something adverse to what voters decided to do when they went to the polls.
Yep.
Um, so those are my, uh, those are a few legal questions. I have others, I think, in mind, um, that I'd like to understand, uh, one of them being the procedural piece of it and how that lays out here. Um, anyway, um, I think we ought to allow the folks that are here the opportunity to, to weigh in, um, but I think that we ought to defer making a recommendation to the board until we have some legal advice, if that's what you guys agree to. If you don't and you want to make a recommendation, then that's obviously fair game two.
Do we need to make a motion to continue?
First, we can open the public and let these guys have a chance. Um, let's, let's gavel open the public hearing. Uh, are there any interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the proposed repeal? Come on up. I recognize this fellow.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hello, Mr. Lead.
My name is Gordon Leedy and I am a planner and landscape architect with Ty &amp; Bond.
Touch your microphone and bring it a lot closer to you, too.
Okay. How's that work?
Much better.
Much better. Okay. So for the record, my name is Gordon Leedy and I am a planner and landscape architect with Ty &amp; Bond. I'm here representing, uh, Montahan Company and Merrimack, uh, Park Place LLC.
Slade.
Whatever. The, the, uh, the owners of the, of one of the mixed use projects in question. Um, and I, I guess to sort of lean on an old fashioned New England, New Hampshire phrase, uh, this smacks to me of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Um, the issue really is, you know, that has, has come to light is that your ordinance lacks a definite, a definition of what mixed use is and lacks specificity on what it is that the board and the town would like to see, uh, as a, as a range of uses. So, uh, I think it would be a mistake, in my opinion, to say you must have fifty percent residential, you must have thirty percent, you know, whatever. It should be a range. It should be minimum of ten percent, maximum of forty percent, you know, sort of thing. Um, and that would allow flexibility of this board to do your job in terms of determining what an appropriate mixed use project should look like under the conditional use permit process. Um, and would clarify for property owners and, and applicants what the rules of the road are because it's, it, there is some confusion now. So, but this, uh, this approach, I, I think has some very significant, uh, poses some very significant concerns. Uh, one is that there was an, there has been an attempt to adopt, to propose language at the very end of the proposed zoning amendment, uh, that makes previously approved mixed use conditional use permits, um, subject to the requirements of the former two point oh two four D, but that any proposed modifications or amendments to those previously approved CUP shall be required to comply with the requirements of the underlying zoning district and therefore would require those amendments to go to the ZBA. Well, you know, one of the tenants of zoning and planning around zoning, in my experience, is that you want to avoid creating a lot of non-conforming uses. And what this would do, if adopted, would make some of the most valuable real estate developments in town, non-conforming uses, and would force the ZBA, which is ill-equipped, in my opinion, to deal with these weighty questions of land use, um, the sole authority to approve changes. So I, I mean, from a planning perspective, I think that that, that is a mistake. The other side of it is that if this goes forward and this zoning is repealed, uh, the assumption is that the town will work apace in terms of deciding what should, what a new mixed use ordinance should look like, um, subject to, um, a master planning process. Having been a part of the last master planning process, that process in, in, in this town, I know that master plans take probably two years to develop and adopt. So you're talking about a hiatus in zoning authority for these large developments in town that, um, that, that goes on for an indefinite amount of time. And, and what that does is it puts all of the financing of these projects in jeopardy. It puts all of the, you know, what, what banks and financial institutions are looking for is certainty. And this removes all certainty from these existing approved projects. So, I mean, I, I think that, um, one of the things that the board could recommend is to take perhaps an incremental approach and say, we should develop some placeholder for a definition of what a mixed use development is, adopt some range of uses that we think might be appropriate and acceptable to the community and to, uh, to the board and to the council. Uh, and then by all means, fully that, that, which, which by the way, could be done quite quickly. I mean, you could post a change and then that would be, uh, that would be limiting in the same way that revoking the zoning would be limiting. You, you would not be able to perform until it's, until it's adjudicated, basically, through the, through the council. Um, so, and, and by all means, engage in that master planning process, have a robust discussion about what kind of, you know, what mixed use zoning should look like, whether you want to take pieces of the various, uh, CUPs that you have in your ordinance and combine them or morph them into something completely different. But that, that project can take place on a timeframe that doesn't jeopardize, you know, millions of dollars of investment. So that would be my thoughts.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Are there other butters who wish, uh, not butters, uh, interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay. Uh, if there are none, um, I'd sort of offer my own comments. Um, I thought that Gordon's, um, statement was, uh, well, well made and I don't disagree with it. Um, I think that, um, one of the challenges and one of the needs for legal advice is this, uh, course that Gordon is suggesting to say, hey, maybe there's a different way to do this. Um, at least in the memo is suggesting that that's not available to us, that we've got to, you know, give a thumbs up or a thumbs down to the recommendation that's before us. Um, and so since we're, I'm not able to correlate with the statute based, that with the statute based on the memo that we have, I want to know what it is that we can do and if we can make a different proposal kind of a thing. Um, I, I worry about the, for the same reason, I think Gordon is optimistic to think the master plan is two years, um, it's probably two years from when you start. Um, we haven't started. Uh, we're not, we're not starting tomorrow either. Um, and so what, when, when will that be, uh, twenty twenty-five, six or something? And, um, then once you have a master plan, uh, that doesn't necessarily implement any zoning regulations of its own, then you start saying, well, the master plan leads us in this direction, let's draft something and then go through the adoption process for a zoning ordinance and that can be a significant amount of additional time. Um, and so, uh, with that in mind and also noting that, um, there is no particular urgency with respect to doing anything with this because there aren't any undeveloped fifty acre parcels that are going to undertake any, um, CUP applications in our town. I mean, there literally are zero left. Um, and although one of the ones that we talked about is on a, is, is operates with a variance because it's smaller than is required, it's at least thirty-five acres and we don't have any of that either. Um, and so, uh, I, my, my thought on the timing of it, uh, is, um, is troubling. At, at the same time, because there aren't any, um, uh, large parcels of land, the actual proposal itself only affects the existing entities. It doesn't affect anybody else in town. Um, and there is a concept in zoning or, or an impermissible concept in zoning in New Hampshire called spot zoning, um, which this is pretty close to it. This is targeting one applicant or, or, or at most three. Um, and, uh, that's something that's not permitted under New Hampshire law. Um, and I, maybe this is not spot zoning, but I'd like to hear that from our legal counsel to decide that. Um, if you hadn't heard that term spot zoning before, it's basically targeting a parcel and deciding to affect the zoning only for, for Neil's property, nobody else's. Um, and obviously that's, uh, violates all sorts of, uh, actually constitutional principles. So with that in mind, uh, your comments, if you got any.
Uh, I agree completely with you on, on this. Um, yeah, my, I mean, I, I was pretty vocal about, I think we needed to change the, the definition of mixed use to help applicants in the future. Um, I, I don't know the legality of this and how this all works, so I, I would have concerns with it as well.
You have some comments? You don't have to.
I agree with, how do you feel about it? We should check legal.
I echo that as well. This is uneasy.
Robert. So all I can do to answer the process question is going through emails. I was copied on one from the town's legal counsel, kind of outlined the process, which Tim laid out in his memo, and I can just read that, basically summarizing most of the same thing, but the key piece of what he says is, well, let me just read the whole thing. So he says, six, RSA six seventy-five two states, the charter adopted by the voters should describe how to amend the zoning ordinance and at a minimum requires the planning board to hold a public hearing prior to any amendment pursuant to RSA six seventy-five seven. The town charter addresses this in two ways. One, section eleven five states that land use ordinance, which would include zoning ordinance, are to be adopted and amended pursuant to New Hampshire law and section four dash eight enumerates the powers of the council conferring on the council all powers of town meeting and others, except for the passage of town budget. I interpret these two provisions, this is the attorney speaking now, as requiring the town to follow the state law process for zoning amendments applicable to town meeting, that is towns, uh, still in meeting towns, excuse me, applicable to town meeting towns, but with the council acting as the town meeting to approve or reject the amendments. That means that the council may propose a zoning amendment to the planning board pursuant to RSA six seventy-five three one, and the planning board must then hold a public hearing but may not make changes to the proposed amendment and may only vote to recommend or not. Regardless of the planning board's review, the amendment will come back to the council for final action. So that's all I have for language from the council, but the board.
Yeah, it's pretty much exactly what the memo says.
Exactly, but you can certainly follow up with additional questions.
Yeah.
But it doesn't dictate that it has to be done tonight.
Correct.
So we could postpone making a decision on our part until we've had time to, to consult with our legal counsel.
Absolutely.
Which is the same as the council's legal counsel. I mean. And we're not looking to sort of create a division between us where we're fighting over legal principles. We just want to make sure we're doing it right. Um, no, heaven forbid, I, the idea that, that a planning board and the town council have their own legal councils having fights with each other is, um, not going to be my legacy on this board. Um, but, uh, so, uh, I guess the, the motion I would suggest is that we continue the public hearing until our August whatever meeting.
Second meeting in August.
And, and see if we can arrange some legal counsel to meet with us at a non-meeting before that meeting. Um, and I think probably the various things that we, uh, talked about here, I talked about here, um, but if anybody else has any other questions they think they want to hear from legal counsel, um, it doesn't do us any good to spring the questions on them at that August meeting because they won't have the answers and then we'll be continuing again while they go get them. So, um, it helps to provide them. At the same time, describing your legal questions in a public forum is revealing legal advice is confidential. So, uh, anyway.
Continue to the sixteenth?
Continue to the sixteenth. Is there a second? Motion and a second to continue to the sixteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Yep.
Yes, you're right, fifteenth, August fifteenth.
I'm sorry, yes, fifteenth.
Um, for the purposes of obtaining legal advice on substance and process. Correct?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. Gordon?
I have a question. I have a question that's not really, it's, it's related, but it's sort of outside of the formal consideration. Is the, under, under the outlined procedure, the town council then needs to have a public hearing or this is the public hearing?
This is.
They have a vote. I don't know if they actually could, conduct a public hearing as a part of their process or not.
Yes, so this process here, the planning board level is only a recommendation to the council. The council would be taking the final vote whether or not to pass or reject.
Will they hold a public hearing?
Do they need a public hearing?
Yes.
They do need, they, they will have a public.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just curious.
Thank you. I think we're all going to learn a little bit more about the process coming forward, so thank you very much. Thank you for that. Okay. I don't know if Barbara is still on property or should she bail out, but if you see her out there in the hall, send her back in. Okay. She probably did, is a takeoff. Planning and zoning administrators report. Robert, do we have one?
So all I have at this point would be to decide what to do with the August 1st meeting.
With the August 1st meeting? If there's no agenda items and we didn't add any, I'm all in favor of having a summer vacation.
Yep. I agree.
Anyone disagree? Thank you, Barbara. Come on back up. You want to have an August 1st meeting or you're going to miss it with the rest of us?
I'll miss it with the rest of us.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any questions by members of the board for staff?
Not for staff, but there was a, an email that came out from the state with, I think it was a webinar for, I think, new planning board, zoning board members that's available and I thought for some of you might be worthwhile to sit in on and, and just get some education. And it's an easy enough thing to do, so I, I had sent that out to everybody on both planning and zoning, so that if you can do it, it'd be worthwhile.
Let's, a good suggestion. I want to update everybody on board membership changes and updates and things like that. This may be Brian's last meeting with us.
Yeah, I believe so.
I think the town council is going to take up appointments and if they approve him for the zoning board, then he would have to resign from this board because we can only have one dual member and Lynn is in that role. The town council is also taking up Lynn's reappointment to this board, Halim's reappointment to this board, but as a full member instead of as an alternate, and that's the recommendation. And there is another candidate who is interviewing to fill a role on the board, which would be either Paul's or Brian's if that person goes forward and gets appointed. It's been our habit to keep that person's name confidential until it moves forward, even though the interview committee already publishes names of who's interested and that's out there if anybody cares to know it. I've never met the fellow. I understand he's a good guy and look forward to meeting him and hopefully see him come here. So our, constitution of our board is about to get shaken up like a bunch of dice in the thing and thrown out on the table again.
We're going to have pretty much a full board, which is good.
Yes, well, we will have at that point, I think the, the new fellow will probably be an alternate in Halim's old spot. We've got one full board member's position. It'll be yours or Paul's, whichever we consider it to be, that's open.
And I think, I think there's another person that's interested in coming in, so that will be coming through. So we're, we're getting to the point where we don't have to worry about having a quorum and having applicants come and not be able to hear them because we are not people, which is.
Well, until this latest round of shakeups, we actually were a full board with, with all alternates.
But the ZBA was not, and we need both.
Sorry about that. I don't like that much.
We need them both.
We do. I just like one better than the other. We all have a favorite child, right?
I, I can't comment on that.
Is that a commercial where the daughter comes up and says, oh, yogurt for my favorite child? It's like, well, my favorite daughter. His son's sitting right there. Okay, discussion of possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any?
That was my only thing.
Okay, the approval of the minutes of June 20th, 2023. What is the will of the board?
Move we approve as distributed.
Is there a second? Motion in a second? Or does anyone have any changes to those minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? What's that? Okay, we'll count you as an aye. 600 to approve the minutes. That concludes the agenda for tonight and then the motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn?
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?